Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on March the 2nd, 2021, 10:00 AM, Commissioners Court Rooms in County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is the infocation, pledge of allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag and Commissioner Ford will delete those.
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for this opportunity to do the work of Brazos County. Please help us as Commissioners to do your will and not just our own. Please watch over our first responders, our military and our educators. Thank you so much, Lord, for the good work that Chief Jim Stewart and the volunteers are doing at the Brazos Center. We appreciate that so much, Lord. We pray in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor to Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, Commissioner. Number two is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Bill, you want to?
Yeah, I'll kick it off.
Okay. Give us your name and...
I'm gonna set up my little timer so I don't...
Okay.
Because I talk for a living and I don't want to get carried away. Four minutes, right? What happens at 4:05? Are you gonna look at me? Okay, let me start the timer.
We got that hooked.
I know, okay. Okay, my name is Bill Bachelor. I know, familiar with several of you as I've been in politics in local area. I've lived here 40 years. I have a snack food distribution company here. I make America Fat. That's what I do for a living and I'm very good at it, I might point out. Part of the reason I'm here today, by the way, today is our 185th year as a nation. We are independents from Mexico, 185 years ago today, March 2nd. People should may be aware of that. Also, Greg Abbott will be having a luncheon today in Lubbock at 1:30 to declare we're going to be free of restrictions. I know that's what he's gonna do because he's gonna be running for president in four more years. He's got his finger to the wind and too bad he didn't do this a while back. That's why I'm here for masks. I reviewed the minutes since back to December 1st. I didn't see anybody ever talking about this. After listening to Governor Noem at CPAC and Governor DeSantis, it just is frustrating. I was in essential business because I distribute potato chips last March. If you remember, end of last March when we had our 14-day shelter in place. I'm an anti-masker. I cannot find any science anywhere. If you were, someone were to say, "Bill, put your mask up," fine. I'm in your place of business, that's fine. No one's asked me and I appreciate that. I can't find any science anywhere that says healthy people should wear masks. I can't find it. I wish someone would show it to me. I have seen a Norway study of 5,000 participants saying masks are ineffective to stop viruses. They're smaller than the smallest opening. And these cloth masks, they're a joke. They're not stopping nothing. So this is all kind of a farce. It's frustrating as I watch our businesses be restricted. If you told me, Judge Peters, that I could only sell to 25% of my customers or 50%, I don't know what the restaurant limit is now. Maybe it's 50?
Seventy-five.
It is 75? I just find that horrendous. I'm a freedom lover. William Wallace and Braveheart, freedom. Has he been stretched apart? Sorry to give that analogy, but I'm freedom. And I think we should have that ability to have options. I don't like seat belts. After my second ticket, I started wearing them, you know? I got tired of paying that. It's freedom. Let me, it's my body. If I want to kill myself, do you realize we don't have a helmet law in Texas? You don't require to wear a helmet to ride a motorcycle. Are you aware of that? Most of you are. That's freedom. It's crazy. I don't own a bike, but if I did, I'd want, I'd wear a helmet. But that's freedom and people are scared of freedom. Please, when Governor Abbott drops that today, please allow businesses, we're friends here, we're all friends, allow the businesses to do what they want. If they want to have a mask mandate in their business and I choose I'm not going to wear a mask, I won't go. But allow the businesses to have freedom, please. I think that's very important. It would serve us all well. That's, I got 50 seconds left. I don't want to kill the time. I'll let someone else. But are there any questions I could answer perhaps?
We can't have dialogue in the public input.
Oh, my bad, my bad, my bad. Well, thank you for allowing me to come and speak and thank you. Oh, I'm not, I've got to go to work. I read the rest of the agenda. It's kind of boring for me, so I'll let you all enjoy, enjoy that. Take your free time.
All right, Bill, thank you for coming in. Is there any other citizen input? Hearing none, we will consider take action on agenda items 3 through 21. Number three is request authorization for a wire transfer $83,941.04 to HHSC for the DY5 uncompensated care withheld final payment for the benefit of the qualified hospitals using funding from Brazos County Local Provider Participation Fund.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number four is request from Fleet Services for payment authorization to Stewart and Stevenson in amount of $2,112.04 for repairs to a grade all. A purchase order was obtained and asked for 1,500, but the repairs exceeded the purchase order.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number five is request from Tax Office for the following personnel changes effective March 6, 2021. This will decrease the FY21 budget in the amount of $89.
Move approval A through E.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number six is request from Justice of Pice 2 for the following personnel changes for effective date is March 6, 2021. This will decrease the Justice of Pice FY21 budget in the amount of $45.
Move approval A and B.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number seven is request from Justice of Pice Precinct 3 for the following personnel changes with effective date March 6, 2021. This decrease the Justice of Pice Precinct 3 FY21 budget in the amount of $60.
Move approval A through C.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Non-motion carries. Number eight is approval of the ACA Reporting and Tracking Service renewal.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number nine is approval of the renewal test environmental for Oracle in the amount of $3,796.86.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 10 is approval of Sheriff's Office Commissary Fund and Blinn College District Education and Literary, Literacy Financial Agreement.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 11 is approve contract renewal 21-114-R Internet Services with Fiberlight LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 12 is amendment number two to contract 21-064 for janitorial papers products with Perry Office Plus to change manufacturer product number in line out of number 13.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 13 is award of IQCIP 21-622 Concrete and Electrical Services on Asphalt Tank for Brazos County Road and Bridge, recommended vendors Call Your Construction LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 14 is request permission to enter private properties owned by CWCONTE LLC and RSCONTE LLC on Peach Creek Road. Project will repair scouring under bridge at Peach Creek Road sites located Precinct 1.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 15 is tax refund application for the following.
Move approval A through F.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 16 is Commissioners Court minutes for the following dates.
Move approval A through D.
Second. Motion made, seconded, to approve A through D, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 17 is budget amendments FY20/21, 21.1 through 21.6.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 18 is personnel change status.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, to approve A and B, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 19 is payment of claims. Claims be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8105936 through claim number 8106105.
Move approval.
And claim number 9001369 through claim number 9001431.
Now move approval. Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. We're gonna skip down to number 22 is acknowledgment of CY2020 Racial Profiling Report for Sheriff's Office. Number 23 is acknowledgment of the 2020 Racial Profiling Report for Constable Precinct 1. Number 24 is acknowledgment of 2020 Racial Profiling Report for Brazos County Constable Precinct 4. Number 25 Juvenile Director's Report on Inmate, or Detention Population.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We presently have 23 juveniles in detention, 18 males, five females, 10 are in isolation for, just for protocol, and we have 17 on electronic monitor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, lady. Number 26 Sheriff's Report on Inmate Population.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Our population high last 24 hours was 556. That's 480 males, 76 females. We currently have 33 on electronic monitor with five pending. We currently have zero inmates who are positive for COVID and zero who are quarantined. And we have two employees out total for the agency. So those are looking good.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Number 27 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Happy birthday, Texas.
Yeah. Yeah. Number 28 is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Judge, you want to?
Is that what they need?
Yeah, this would be the spot, yeah. Yeah, you want to come up here and share with us kind of what's going on at your office that you're out of for a little while?
Good morning, Judge Rick Hill, Brazos County, Justice of Pice Precinct 3. Two weeks ago, Wednesday, I woke up, told my wife, "You know what? I ought to go check on the office, see how it appeared." Okay? Parked in the parking lot, went to the back door, there's water coming out, okay? We were able to quickly get that stopped. County authorities were notified, Gary Arnold, Leslie Williams, were, we, the very next day, we were extracting and dehumidifying and doing the things that we needed to do. The original plan was to try to stay there. It became apparent quite early, at some point, that that was impossible. Again, thanks to Ernest and Gary Arnold and the Leslie Williams and the staff and really the Constable's office and my office and their staff. Thankfully, we had a JP court, all right, available. And so over the weekend, things were moved, we packed, we moved. Yesterday morning, IT came in and hooked up all the computers and printers. Judge None across his way allowed me to use his courtroom for magistration yesterday. Of course, we do it all by video. We're open for business, okay? We're working with, we've got signs over there, we've got signs here. Truancy, we've had several weather days for truancy court, so we've missed five or six dockets with that. We're gonna try to be catching up with that and moving on. It's a crazy year for truancy because of the virtual piece and the online piece. A lot of families that are getting filed on are families who it's very, very difficult to have the things to be able to be online. And so I've got a little problem with that of, you know, it's not necessarily a family's issue, it's a bigger issue than that. So, but we're working through that and I take great pride in doing that for the county. So we're open. I guess I have no more excuses to not be here at Commissioners Court meetings, all right, since I'm right next door at this point. So any questions about things or?
Well, we're not supposed to have dialogue.
Oh, we have, okay, okay, I'm just, okay, I just was, okay, all right. Well, we're looking forward, the estimator came today, insurance adjuster came today to the precinct 3. You know, it's gonna, it's, you know, I did capital project requests for the last two, through three years to get new carpet and new paint and things like that. And so, you know, it was denied every year, but I guess now the insurance is gonna pay for it, okay? So looking forward to that. I'd like to end with just something I'd like to reach out to you guys about and to consider is that I am actually the President of the Justice of the Peace and Constable Association of Texas this year. And I'm very involved in the legislative session. Bail reform, Lieutenant Governor's language just came out Friday, his bill was filed. We're looking forward to the Governor's bill. We're also working very closely with Senator Whitmire and also Representative Gasol with that. There's different versions of that. To be honest with you, the Governors, what the Governor wants is not what's best for Texas and makes Texas safer. We've had, almost passed that bill a couple of times. I'm bound to determine to pass a bail reform bill that makes Texans safer. And some of the things that are being said aren't, do not make Texas safer. JPs are trained in magstration. We have training on that. The counties that are getting us trouble with bail reform, personal bonds and things like that, Harris County, who personal bonds everybody, all right, even violent criminals. Those criminals are not personal bonded in almost every other county in Texas. And so that being said, one last thing, the taxpayer-funded lobby, all right, anti-taxpayer-funded lobby. County judges and Commissioners, Jim Allison is very involved in that. We are also involved in that. I don't know if you guys are aware of it or not, but there's a resolution that the county judge, the district, county judge and Commissioners Court or associations come up with. And what we feel like is a positive thing in that is that if counties put that in, counties submit that with all the elected officials, that would, that would do that. And so I think I would help, I can help with that. Each organization is doing their own resolutions, but for me, the more powerful resolution would be the one that comes from every single elected official, one resolution, county judge on down, that says, "We're against this." This is our voice, it's the silencing bill is what Jim Allison calls it, is to silence the voice of the citizens of Texas at the legislature. Today at the TAC legislative breakfast meeting, there's actually work, language now that talks about if you have, want to stop by a representative's office to just give them something to give, spread goodwill, they're gonna, you can't do that either, all right? So it's gonna, it's an interesting thing, but we need to be very, very much on top of that. And I'd be loved to help you guys with a joint resolution from Brazos County, all right, not the county judge Commissioners, not the tax assessor collectors, not the district judge and county and district attorneys. It's from us, all right? So with that being said, thank you guys and I'll be next door.
Okay. Thank you, Judge. Any other citizen input and our concerns? Hearing none, we will go back up to number 20. 20 in convening executive session pursuant to the following. A is the Texas Government Code 551.071 to consult with an attorney about pending contemplated litigation and our settlement offer. And then B would be Texas Government Code 551.0725 to deliberate business and financial issues related to a contract being negotiated. This is the one we have to vote on, is that correct?
Yeah.
I have filed this morning a determination letter with the clerk of the court that it is my opinion that open meeting deliberations on this matter would be detrimental to the county's position. And that letter's been filed with the court. So if you unanimously choose to deliberate in executive session, we can do that this morning.
Okay, so we need a motion to...
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, to deliberate in executive session for a contract. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I think that was unanimous, is that correct? Okay? And it needed to be...
Judge, I think the record plan needs to reflect that Commissioner Colley was on ankle to the candidate.
She's on here.
Especially to us. And then we need a...
She has a, she's on mute. She's on, okay. Commissioner Colley, did you vote to approve the closed session?
I don't know how to vote. She's on, but she's not here. Yeah. She was earlier, but she's not here.
Can you unmute yourself?
She's unmuted. She's showing on, I don't know. I guess I, I vote, I guess, um, like that.
Well, we're gonna need, of course, Candy and Cheryl and attorneys, Commissioners Court. And is anybody else, Bruce, that you know of, needs to be in there? I don't, I don't think...
Time is...
Time's 10:24. Time's ten twenty-four.
Okay, we're back in open session.
Okay. Okay, we're coming back out of executive session, it is ten forty-one.
Uh, I'd like to move that we, uh, engage West Webb, Albritton and Gentry for legal services.
I'll second that, Judge.
Motion made and seconded to engage West Webb, Albritton, uh, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Uh, that's the final item, so the next one is to adjourn.
Good.
Thank you all.